Good evening, everyone. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting ordered. Welcome, everyone, and appreciate having you here. We'll begin with the invocation by Reverend Bob Dierdor, beautiful Savior Lutheran Church. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for the many blessings you have showered upon us so richly, so abundantly, and we thank you for the blessings of our citizenry, of our public servants, of our elected officials. We thank you for the opportunities you've granted us to use wisely the resources at our command. We ask your protection upon those whose lives are often at risk as they protect us, keep them from harm and danger. In this night as decisions are made, we ask you to grant wisdom, grant insight, for not only what is good, but for what is best. And, Lord, let there be harmony and let there be resolution that brings more blessing to us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Here.
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 Here. A current copy of the Open Means Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Under the consent agenda, all matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. We'll begin with item number one, improvements of regular meeting on August 6th at work sessions on August 5th, 12th, and 13th, 2019. Item number two, approved mail's appointments of Mike Hansen and Bob Nelson to the plumbing board to replace Bud Gell and Charlie Moreland. Item number three, approved purchase of a used storm sewer jet slash back truck for the public service department knocked to exceed $185,000. And that's it for the...
Move to approve items one, two, and three on the consent agenda.
And that motion passes. All right, item number four, conduct hearing and take action on an appeal by Joy Gilliman relative to her receipt of notice to repair or demolish property damaged by a fire at 1419 Rodeo Road. And I would also, at this point, like to appoint a hearing officer, Doug Stack, to act as our hearing officer tonight.
Is Joy Gilliman or anyone in the audience that represents Joy Gilliman? Let me suggest to the council, you do have the option of continuing this or tabling it until the next meeting. There's always the possibility that she didn't receive the notice that was sent to her, or assuming that she did receive the notice that was sent to her, we can conduct the hearing tonight that will satisfy our requirement to provide Ms. Gilliman due process. And so unless I hear a motion to table this to the next meeting, I'll conduct the hearing.
How was she notified?
I sent a notice by regular first-class mail.
Certified or non?
No, on July 29th. Regular first-class postage. If you table it, then we will send a certified letter.
What's the standard procedure here, Doug, as far as, is there a timeframe that has elapsed before we act on something like this, or how is this normally taken care of?
Ms. Gilliman was sent a notice to abate a nuisance. She has a damaged building. In order, the notice required her to abate or demolish the building within 30 days. She had then an option of filing within 10 days of that notice, which she did, a request for an appeal, which is why we're here tonight. We were required to schedule this hearing within, I think, 10 days after her request for appeal. We did schedule this hearing within 10 days of her request for hearing, and that's again, that again brings us here tonight.
How do we determine which properties we take action on? I know of some other houses that had fires and they're still standing, and I'm curious how we determine which ones we choose to take an action on, or maybe we take an action on all of them, I don't know.
Well, on this particular property, it's because she asked for an appeal of the notice for her to abate or destroy the building.
But again, how do we, how do we determine which properties we send a notice to abate or destroy the building? How do we determine, do we send that to all buildings that have been on fire, or how does that work?
All buildings in a nuisance condition, yes, we do. And most either abate the nuisance, destroy the building, or we end up in court asking for an order to demolish the building.
And what qualifies as a nuisance, sorry, Jim?
There are definitions in the unsafe or dangerous building code. Generally, it's a failure of the structure or a danger to health and danger to adjoining properties, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Ma'am, this isn't a public hearing.
Oh, it's not? Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Jim.
Doug, is Joy the sole owner there? I thought she and her husband owned that.
My information is that she is a sole owner.
I guess my thought is, let's make sure we certify mail that she, we know she got it, so we, I don't know, would we be in trouble? I mean, I guess, what would be the ramifications, other than PR, if she's like, I didn't get this letter? Are there any further things that she could do, like, I never got that letter since it wasn't certified?
In my opinion, no, but I don't think it'd be unreasonable to table it to the next meeting either.
I would like to move to table this until the next meeting.
And I will issue her a notice by certified mail.
Before we have a move to table, I'd like to hear from Dave. He's the one that went over there and took a look at this.
Actually, a motion to table's not debatable. And now, was that a motion to the next meeting?
Yes.
Table to the next meeting?
Motion passes. Okay, item number five, public hearing and action on resolution to approve and adopt a blight and substandard study by the City of North Platte and approval of related actions regarding the North Platte, Nebraska blight and substandard study. Blight study area 11 study prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants LLC.
We have a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, if anybody wishes to speak.
Motion to close public hearing.
Public hearing's been closed.
I make motion that we adopt a resolution to approve and adopt a blight and substandard study by the City of North Platte and approval of related sections, actions regarding the North Platte, Nebraska blight and substandard study, blight study area 11 study prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants LLC.
Just a quick question for Jim, if that's okay? Jim, the project that we saw from Chief Development in the, in the work session is just to the east of this, is this land, does, does what we're doing here in any way inhibit what they're going to be trying to, I mean, it sounds like we've got plenty of cushion in the amount of light. I guess, do you see any negative repercussions to that potential project as a result of going ahead with this designation separately?
No, I really don't. I, in fact, at one time, there was talk about tying the two projects together, but no, I really don't.
Okay, thanks.
When I look at this, and in preparation for a tax increment finance, it would seem that the proposal that was presented to us here a week or so ago by the Chief Development out of Grand Island would greatly enhance the value of this property. And if, in fact, this other property gets developed, this particular property is, should increase in value, I would think. And so, given the fact that we don't know what's going to be constructed on it, there's been no proposals made to us, as far as I know, as to what might be built on the property. I think it's really premature for us to go ahead and accept the blighted and substandard designation on the property. It would seem to me like that we should wait to see, first of all, what the developer has in mind as far as developing the property, and then, then we can make a more educated decision on whether the property really, one of the designations, I think, for TIF is to make sure that the project would never get built without the tax increment finance. And right now, we don't know, we don't know what the proposition is, so my position right now is that I would vote against the blighted and substandard designation.
Ed, I understand what you're saying, but on the other side of it, the TIF process will actually come later. Each TIF project would have to stand on its own. So while Mr. Keenan is preparing this or putting it in a position where it could be used on that, doesn't necessarily mean that it would be. And the other thing is, is that there may be multiple projects in there that would come in front of the council, again, each one having to gain your approval on its own merits.
Also, we, at this point, we've seen a conceptual plan from Chief Development, but I've seen a lot of conceptual plans, with all due respect to Chief, because I think they have a good reputation for following through, but it's, it's hard to imagine what all that's gonna, what kind of metamorphosis is gonna happen in terms of what we get the conclusion. And back to Jim's comment, we, we still have to scrub each TIF project individually carefully for its financial merits, so I don't, I don't feel like we're preloading a TIF approval on this.
And that motion passes. Item number six, consider request for extension of CDBG 17-DTR-102 Downtown Revitalization Grant Contract to extend the contract end date to November 8th of 2020 and authorize submission of the request for extension to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Move that we approve the request for extension of CDBG 17-DTR-102 Downtown Revitalization Grant Contract to extend the contract end date to November 8th, 2020 and authorize submission of the request for extension to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Quick question, sorry, it's too late here, but possibly for Judy, is, it mentioned that we're having trouble getting contractor bids on some of these projects. Do you, do you feel like there's anything going on in our ordinances, our historic review process, or any of that, that's causing any kind of hitch on any of this, or do you think it's just lack of contractor availability?
In my opinion, it's just limited contractor availability. It's really specific, you've got window replacement is a lot of what they're doing. You don't have a lot of window replacement contractors. The other thing is tuck pointing, masonry, there's very few masons in the area, so it's just really tough with the number of projects that they want to do. We've got 11 or 12 of them that have been kind of pre-approved or pre-designated, and they're just having a real tough time getting those bids in and trying to get things going.
Thanks.
Yep.
And that motion passes. Item number seven, consider resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council/Priest Arts Center fundraiser event on September 20th, 2019.
Move that we approve the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on property owned by the City of North Platte, including a portion of West Fifth Street during the Creativity Unlimited Arts Council/Priest Arts Center fundraiser event on September 20th, 2019.
And that motion passes as well. Item number eight, approve application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council/Priest Arts Center for a special designated license on September 20th, 2019 from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Priest Arts Center 416 North Jefferson Street for a fundraiser event.
Move that we approve application by Creativity Unlimited Arts Council/Priest Arts Center for a special designated license on September 20th, 2019 from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Priest Arts Center 416 North Jefferson Street for a fundraiser event.
And that passes also. Item number nine, adopt resolution authorizing mayor to sign interlocal agreement between the City of North Platte and Lincoln County to provide a coordinated response to a disaster or emergency in Lincoln County and other cities and villages in Lincoln County.
Move that we adopt resolution authorizing mayor to sign interlocal agreement between the City of North Platte and Lincoln County to provide for a coordinated response to a disaster or emergency in Lincoln County and other cities and villages in Lincoln County.
And that motion passes. Item number 10, action on ordinance number 4013 to create street improvement district number 327 in the intersections of Dewey and Leota, Jeffers and Leota, Dewey and Francis, Dewey and East William, Dewey and East Jeffers, Dewey, I'm sorry, Dewey and E., Jeffers and Francis, 12th and Adams, and 12th and Jeffers in accordance with agreement ZL 1904 with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the project number ELC EC 83, dash 83, dash 2, or parentheses, 1035. Yes, please.
An ordinance creating street improvement district number 327 in the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and describing the various streets in said street improvement district and improvements to be constructed therein.
I move that we suspend the three required ratings on ordinance number 4013.
Sure.
So why is engineering wanting us to suspend three ratings on this one, exactly?
The reason is, is we approved the agreement with the Department of Transportation at our last meeting, and since there will be nobody assessed for this cost, for our portion of this project, we'd like to get it taken care of so that we can get our financing in place to pay for our share of that budget.
We just pay, yeah, 50% of the project, correct?
That's correct.
And that motion passes. Item number 11, oh, sorry.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 4013.
Second.
And that passes as well. Thank you. All right, now, item number 11. Approve agreement for independent contractor services slash government access channel for the 2019-2020 budget year between the City of North Platte and Cynthia Gutchenreiter.
Move that we approve the agreement for independent contractor services slash government access channel for the 2019-2020 budget year between the City of North Platte and Cynthia Gutchenreiter.
And that motion passes. Item number 12, adopt resolution approving agreement between the City of North Platte and the League Association of Risk Management.
Move that we adopt resolution approving agreement between the City of North Platte and League Association of Risk Management.
Good, you have a few questions on this one, too. Go ahead, Andrew. No, go ahead.
So, my questions, you said that things may change during the budget, you know, with them in the future here in terms of how we, our agreements with them and stuff?
Things have developed nicely in that there have been three lawsuits filed in Lancaster County involving LARM and their Board of Directors. The first lawsuit, and perhaps the most significant lawsuit, was a lawsuit by, a lawsuit challenging the people that held themselves out as the directors of LARM. They were doing things that weren't necessarily in the city's best interest. They were challenged as their status, whether or not they were a valid board. A decision came down last week by the District Court in Lancaster County, ruling that they, in fact, were not duly elected board members of LARM, and they were removed immediately. And so a new board will step in and conduct business in a manner much more conducive to the city's best interests. So we are suggesting a three-year contract here.
So, we think that we're good on the negoti, you know, on all the rates and everything else?
We're hoping.
Or is it, or is it?
We expect to, we expect to do well on, on the upcoming premium.
Okay, so we, we're good to approve this now? We don't need, we shouldn't delay it or, I mean, until we kind of know?
There's a deadline.
The resolution has to be back to them by the end of this month, so this would be our last opportunity to get it into them without jeopardizing our...
To qualify for the 5% discount, technically.
Okay.
It was, I was, and was issued by a local insurance agent, and their opinion was that, that the city should consider, at some point, when the timing's right, going out to have private proposals for insurance. And their indication was that the, the market had gotten softer on insurance premiums, and now it's kind of firming up, I think, again, we're seeing out there, and that Carney, Grand Island, Hastings, and Holdridge, I believe, had opted to leave LARM, and North Platte's the largest remaining member in, in LARM. Is that, is that accurate information, Jim?
Yes, that's correct. Also, the cities of Pili and La Vista were in that group that left at that time as well. We were the only ones that stayed in.
And so, one thing I'm a little concerned about is that, that, that is the, it doesn't lock our premiums with a 5% discount, it's, here's what your premium is, and then we'll take 5% off, correct? So it doesn't control any premium increases. I, I would tell you guys, I'm a little concerned that the 1% differential is worth, is worth an extra year when you don't have any control on the ceiling. And I don't think our recent experience, based on the information I read about the lawsuit, has been that favorable towards North Platte. Very happy to see that's resolved. Should be favorable towards us. And so I'm struggling a little bit with, you make a three-year commitment with 180-day notice period, which, in the insurance world, they like to bid things usually at 30 and 60 days out, they don't like to forward commit, usually, I don't think, over 90 days for the insurance. And so I, I'm a little concerned that that 1% differential is worth it. I'm curious what others think about it, which I think would equate to about $15,000 a year. But if, if we went out to the private market a year from now, or two years from now, and maybe a year to two now, and for a proposal, and it was 10% less, well, that's $150,000. And so I guess I'm just a little concerned about, is, is, is three years too long for no ceiling and a 1% differential versus, versus two years? Do you guys have an opinion on, on that concern, Jim?
I guess mine is that we really need to see how this court decision weighs out, and I think that under the new administration that will perhaps be taking over LARM, that again, we would be in a better position to negotiate with them even on the premiums that we perhaps have already paid.
Do you think the difference between two and three years affects the city's negotiating position in that?
No, I really don't.
I might mention that the city has a significant interest in the reserves of LARM, and it's my understanding that if we did leave LARM, we would leave that on the table. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that's also correct, Doug, and I'm glad you brought that up, because that is one of the things that kept us at the table through this whole ordeal.
So even if, if you get outside, so not if you left during a, a contract period, but if you left at the end of a contract period, similar to ways some of the health group plans work, you'd leave reserves on the table, if you, even if you exited at a termination of a contract time?
I can also suggest to you that we initially entered into agreements with LARM because we, I think we had a great deal of difficulty finding local coverage, and the coverage has become so customized to cities that I'm not, I think if, if there's a local insurance agency that's in a position to be able to provide a service, I've got to believe we'd be happy to hear from them and see what they have to offer.
By nature, LARM and these types of pools are designed to try to help take volatility out of entering and exiting the private market, right? Is that the general philosophy?
Yes, that's correct, and, and that's where I think we'd be in a better position here in the near future to be able to negotiate a better deal with them, perhaps even on some of the premium that we've already paid.
So if I understand...
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if I understand you, Jim, you're saying that we potentially could be looking at a refund?
I can't guarantee that, but I can guarantee you that that's what we'll be working towards.
So if we leave LARM, then we would not get any kind of a refund? Do you have any idea what that number might be?
I really don't at this point. I have an idea of what we might be looking at, Ed, but I really, it's not anything based on anything, really, so I, I don't know.
Just to share my opinion with you guys, I have no, I'm not pushing for us to leave LARM, I'm just a little concerned about three years and making that kind of a commitment over one, over 1% differential. I'm not in favor of the resolution as provided because of that, but I'm not pushing, I mean, my only thrust, I'm kind of splitting hairs a little bit, because my only thrust would be to back it up to two, to a two-year, if, if you guys don't see any major downsides other than the 1% differential with doing that.
Well, to leave, it's what, six months, 180 days, six months, agreement, you know, notice, whatever, so I mean, that's, by the time you would, let's say, want to go shopping and stuff like that, by the time you'd unravel and everything else, you'd be looking at probably close to six months anyway to back out.
Yeah, but the way I understand this, aren't we making a three-year commitment?
Yeah, but there's still a back out on it.
We are, but you can still get out with 180-day notice.
So you have a, yeah, you have a six-month window that you can play with, you know, in terms of...
Jim, 180 days notice or within the first 180 days?
No, 180-day notice.
At any time of the three years.
The only time, I think, Jim, that would be accepted out of that would be the 90-day period prior to renewal.
So is it more punitive to leave if you're under commitment versus you're at the termination? So in other words, if we, 18 months from now, wanted to leave, no, I'm sorry, at two years, so let's say at the two-year point, and we wanted to leave, would that be more punitive to leave if we were under the three-year commitment versus the two-year commitment?
No, it shouldn't be, because again, that's written right into the agreements that we have with them, that as long as we give them the proper notice, we would be able to leave.
So there's, in essence, what you're saying, Andrew, is there's, in essence, no difference between the two, one-year, two-year, and three-year commitments?
Might as well take that extra 1% while we can.
Yeah, okay. I'm learning. This is lap one for me.
And that motion passes. Item number 13, approve solid waste disposal agreement between J Bar J Land Inc. and the City of North Platte and authorize the mayor to sign all documents for the city.
Move the solid waste disposal agreement between J Bar J Land Inc. and the City of North Platte and authorize the mayor to just sign all documents for the city.
And that motion passes. Item number 14, second reading on action on ordinance number 4011, moving regular North Platte City Council meetings from 7:30 PM to 5:30 PM.
Move that we would...
Yes, yes, please.
An ordinance to the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, commending sections 30.021 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Platte. commending sections 30.021 of the municipal code of the city relating to the time and place of council meetings and quorums, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict you're with, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 4011, moving regular North Platte city council meetings from 7:30 PM to 5:30 PM.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how, what the procedure is here, but I was wondering if we couldn't make an amendment to this and change that time from 5:30 to 6:30 to maybe more accommodate the public and make it easier for the public to come. And it would still be a reasonable hour then for the employees to be able to get home and be with their families as well?
You can make a motion to amend the main motion.
I would...
May I say something real quick? We've been holding meetings at 9:00 AM every, every other Monday or every Monday?
Every Monday.
Don't seem to have an issue. To me, 9:00 on Monday mornings is probably a real difficult time. I don't see an issue with 5:30. Just wanted to add that.
I've heard some good feedback on the 5:30 move. After our last meeting, we discussed it. I've had a few contacts. There's a couple of things I didn't think of. I know the, a couple of members of the media mentioned after the last meeting that the earlier time sure helps with getting to, to press on stories. Appreciate that comment. Another item I didn't even think of is I had somebody in development comment to me that, that we sure, we have a lot of people traveling from out of town in addition to our local citizens that are coming to present development projects or whatnot. And that, that differential really helps with their return travel to Lincoln or Omaha. So those are just a couple of comments I've shared. I've heard generally positive things about the 5:30.
And I'll just echo that. I had people come up to me after the meeting and call me. And they said that 5:30 would work so much better for them in terms of trying to get here with kids and everything else.
Yeah, and just personally, I just think that if 9:00 on Monday mornings works for them, if it's important to the constituents, they'll be there.
It's an argument that I'm exercising futility, but I'm still gonna go for 7:30.
When are you gonna retire, Adam?
I'm not retiring. Ed, did you make...
Screw me out.
I didn't make a motion, Doug. And I, I thank you for your comments. Those are comments that I hadn't heard, and, and they make a lot of sense. So thank you.
So no motion?
No. No motion.
And that motion passes. Item number 15, adopt resolution approving claims and authorize the issuance of warrants to Myers Construction Inc. in the amount of $170,361.06. A warrant to Cement Products Inc. in the amount of $115,627.21. A warrant to Midlands Contracting Inc. in the amount of $564,770.61. A warrant to Paulson Inc. in the amount of $178,224.30. And a warrant to ATC Group Services LLC in the amount of $665.00 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st of 2013.
Move that we adopt resolution approving claims and authorizing the, the issuance of a warrant to Myers Construction Inc. in the amount of $170,361.06. A warrant to Cement Products Incorporated in the amount of $115,627.21. A warrant to Midlands Contracting Inc. in the amount of $564,770.61. A warrant to Paulson Inc. in the amount of $178,224.30. And a warrant to ATC Group Service LLC in the amount of $665.00 to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May 21st of 2013.
That motion passes. And item number 17, claims. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped one. Well, we better go back on 16 then. Approve of the renewal of interlocal agreement between the city and county for maintenance of roads.
Move that we approve the interlocal agreement between the city and county for maintenance of roads.
And that motion passes. Now we'll go to item number 17, which is claims.
Move that we pay the claims.
And that motion passes as well. Anyone wish to make a jo...
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you all.